Roll call for the City Council meeting of January 4th, 2014 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones is absent, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of January 21st, 2015, and bills for payment on February 6th and 13th, 2015. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Are there any requests for repository sales today? I don't believe there are, I haven't seen any. Are there any requests for repository sales? Not having any, we'll now go to citizens to be heard, and there's one speaker on the agenda, Randy Barnes? Do you have to go first, who signed up? Oh, he was on the agenda here, but yeah, if he goes second, that'd be great. Thank you.
Morning, Council President, Council, Administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, and my topic today is what is $81,732 and free coffee? This morning I woke up and, well, after I left the house, I reached in my pocket and I found, I was pretty lucky today because I had a $100 bill with me. Even though they aren't green, they're the $100 bills that everybody in the world wants. And I thought, what can I do with $100? There's a lot of things I can do with $100, but I wondered, what can council do with $100? What council does every two days with $100? They give the retired clerk $100 every two days, Mr. Clem. So what did Mr. Clem do for the council or for the taxpayers in the last two days to deserve a $100 bill? Because then if you do the math, the city hall is open about 250 days a year. So every day we pay our archivist $50, every two days, a $100 bill. So again, council should know, because they're on this, they're giving Mr. Clem $100 every two days, they probably know what he's done the last two days to deserve that, what he's done for the taxpayers, what he's done last week, what he did last month, and what he did the month before that. Council knows that, right? Because you're giving him $100 every two days. You're getting something for that, right? I'm not sure you're getting anything for that. Because I've talked to several people at City Hall, and they have said they haven't seen Mr. Clem. And I would like to respectfully ask Council President, ask the LA's on to the police department, Mr. Kotowski, ask Mr. Bowers if he would put out an APB, see if anybody's seen Mr. Clem around City Hall. Because we know every two days, council wants to give him $100. And whether he's here or not, he gets that $100 every two days. $12,000 a year, $1,000 a month, 250 bucks a week, $50 a day, $100 every two days. What's council, what are the taxpayers getting for that? And I think the people that would address that, if I go read from the official minutes, the people that said yea, they said yea, we're going to give him $1,000 a month. And those people were council people, Kunko, Jones, Winarski, and Witherspoon. They said yea, or ay, I don't know, ay or yea, to give that man $100 every two days. Again, $12,000 a year, could we have bought any cameras for police cars with $12,000? You know, what's interesting, I don't know if you saw the paper over the weekend, but the clerk, a clerk at county, at the county, he just retired. And you know what he was most proud of? He retired, he was most proud of the fact that he transformed the collection and storage of documents and archived them into electronic, he did that while he was working. This clerk at city, at the county courthouse just across the street, he did this while he was on the job. He didn't say, come on, give me $1,000 a month, I'll come back and archive these records for you. He did it while he was on the job. Mr. Fetzner, it was a good article, he was most proud of the fact that he could do that while he was on the job, he did that, that's what he accomplished. But that's different when you walk across Perry Square. Because when you walk across Perry Square, we need to give somebody $100 every two days to do what they might have, should have done, council should have asked to be done, while they were earning 80-some thousand dollars a year. Council should have asked that that be done. But council didn't. Why didn't council do that? Didn't think of it? Didn't really matter at the time? Well, it sure mattered last summer, because all of a sudden, we got to pay somebody $100 every two days to do the job they should have done while they were here for 48 years. What's wrong with the city? This is a good example. The people that make the decisions, make decisions based on, I don't know, friendship, the buddy system. It's okay. You can pay your buddies as much as you want. But you'll be reminded of it whenever you want to run for reelection. You'll be reminded of the buddy system, because the buddy system is what we count on to get reelected, isn't it? We give our buddies extra money. Back to $100 every two days, we're paying an archivist, right? Give him $100 every two days, Monday and Tuesday, $100, today and tomorrow, $100, Friday and Monday, $100, 50 bucks a day. What are you getting for $50 a day? Does anyone know what you're getting for $50 a day? You must know, you must have a big list, say, Barnes, you're out of your mind. Look at all these great things we get for $50 a day. All these things that couldn't have been done in 48 years, but we're willing to give up, we're willing to give $100 every two days and the free coffee. Invite the police department down, and everybody get a free cup of coffee today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Other citizens to be heard, on the agenda, is there another person signed up there? Okay.
Thank you. I kind of rushed over here today because as I was eating my breakfast-
Give your address, give your name and address, Adam.
Sorry. Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street. I'm here today because as I was eating my breakfast cereal, I saw Kevin Flowers' article that today is the first reading of approving the $523,000 contract to do the preliminary engineering for the viaduct removal. The article gave an impression that the viaduct issue is done and settled, and I just wanted to go on record to clarify a few things that were directly resultant from our meetings with PennDOT and John Tuchack with the City Engineers Office. They had told us several things that are rather poignant to this. First of all, the 2.3 million that is scheduled to go towards the demolition project, which includes the removal, the sidewalk along the south side of East 12th Street, and then the healing of the ground underneath, which is to address the tool, the two resultant cul-de-sacs that you make, that that construction money can be diverted to stabilizing the viaduct. And that does not involve any AE costs, that's strictly a transfer of, from demolition to restoration and stabilization. So that money is available to be diverted, and we had a meeting of the minds in that meeting that we have all of 2015 to try and come up with a legal entity and a plan to both restore and then to maintain in perpetuity the viaduct structure. So those of us in the repurpose of McBride Viaduct Initiative are hard at work putting together those components of that plan. We're also encouraged by the fact that after we've been touting the potential value of the East Avenue Business Corridor, that there's finally public political acknowledgement that there's value there, and it needs to have a task force. So we welcome that as part of the effort to turn that area of town around. We, of course, believe repurposing the viaduct is a huge component of that revitalization. And a peculiar fact that's probably worth knowing is in the one and a half mile stretch of 12th Street, from Ash all the way to Downing, the only pedestrian and bike access across the tracks in that mile and a half is the Bayfront Connector Bridge and the viaduct. Bayfront Connector gives you about nine feet wide of pathway, the viaduct gives you about 29 feet wide of pathway. So to demolish the viaduct, you're taking away 75% of the complete bike and pedestrian crossover of those tracks in that one and a half mile stretch. And I can tell you that's huge for everyone that tries to get over those tracks. We'd also like to incorporate in our plan the safety enhancements to the 12th and East Ave intersection, because that has been ignored for far too long, and that is a huge, critical linkage point for all the students that come from the south side going to East and Wayne Middle School and Holy Family and all the other entities on the north side of tracks that they go to. So from our standpoint, it's a critical component of linkage for the city, and we're hard at work at it. So for the public record, today your vote will not doom the viaduct, it just allows the A&E work to proceed as we agreed with Tuchack and Pettit. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but otherwise, I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trot. Other citizens to be heard?
Good morning. Richard Wagner, 42nd State. I love waking up in the morning and have to listen to the news that a bullet-riddled van showed up at Hammett Hospital with three people suffering from gunshot wounds. What in the world is going on in this little city of ours? I actually came down here today because last night on TV, I watched a retired five-star general ask this question. Is the Obama Administration playing checkers while everyone outside the administration is playing chess? Respect and dignity, two of our strongest points, are gone on the world stage. I think that you and the administration are playing checkers, while every authority and nonprofit that comes down here to deal with you are playing chess. $300,000 apartments for hands, $250,000 hotel rooms for the convention center, that's chess. And I think everyone sitting up there should learn how to play chess instead of checkers. The Port Authority is talking about a 40,000-square-foot building, the old McAllister Building, on the future McAllister Place property. I know the authority plays well with other authorities, just look at the transaction that led to the convention center being placed on the Sassafras Street Pier property. If they have a desire to do something with the old McAllister Building, I'm not sure that I would be looking for outside businesspeople to tell them what they need to do with the property. I would go no further than Scott Enterprises, and either give them the building or work hand-in-hand with the Scots to use that property as part of the grand scheme. In December, during budget negotiations, Mr. Witherspoon made a bold, brash statement that the tax increase voted on by him and other council members only equates to $7 or $8 a month. That's on a $100,000 piece of property. In my personal situation, that tax increase I am facing for my piece of property is closer to $17 a month, which is over $200 a year. In this week's paper, I read that the Erie School District is over $7 million out of balance. Using the same math that the city had to use, the increase we are facing for school taxes is closer to $24 a month on a $100,000 house. So let's see, since I kind of burden myself with math, the anticipated burden on me will be closer to $900 a year. That equates to $75 a month. Mr. Witherspoon, I have to tell you, $75 more dollars a month for me to live here does hurt my family. And the plain and simple reality of the matter is that we give away, according to the State Auditor General in Erie County, $75 million of tax revenue every year for different nonprofits, government buildings, and authorities. That $75 million could more than balance every budget and also supply a surplus for different capital improvements. I'll do the math for you, that's over $2 billion worth of non-taxable property in Erie County. And if it was broke out even further, the majority of that property sits in the city limits. You have to get off your hands and start doing something. I would start by learning how to play chess and leave your checkerboards at home. Last week in the paper, there was an article, ramps being raised, and it caught my attention. Because the old parking ramps that are around every city, they've kind of outlived their usefulness, and they're starting to tear them down. And that made me think about a parking ramp on the most valuable property in Erie that we're going to build down there to support those two hotels. There has to be a better way to do it. I brought up digging down, putting it underground. Oh, you can't do that, it's by the water. Guess what? That 1,000-foot ore carrier is sitting where there used to be water. And just think how many cars you could park in that area alone if you chose to dig. You can hold back water, they hold back the Hudson River to build the World Trade Center. But we can't do that in Erie, because we think small. We're playing chess again and not checkers, or we're playing checkers and not chess. But thanks for your time, have a great day. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Morning, Council. My name is McDonald. My property's 19th and Reed. You know, that McBride Bridge over there, you done paid enough probably to rebuild that bridge. You've had so many consultants going over there looking. Hell, I could have went and looked. You could have went and looked. That bridge shouldn't be torn down. Somebody done made up their head, because their mind has gone somewhere, it's not up here. That bridge should not be torn down, but somebody done made up their mind, they probably don't even live here, but they done made up their mind. That's the wrong mindset. You should ask the peoples what they want. You don't know what we want, those peoples don't know what we want. They don't live here, you're giving them all that money, and I don't, I don't understand y'all. I guess I don't understand politicians, and I've been around them many years. But you know what? I'm so glad there's a God up there. Some of you don't believe in Him, but I do, I was raised believing in Him. If you don't believe in Him, you're a devil worshiper. And if that, you want to go to hell, to that lake of fire, there's a lake of fire, because the Bible says so. And I believe in the Bible. And you ought to read it, maybe you'll believe in it too. You know, I got so many issues. I could be up here two or three hours and entertain you well. You wouldn't appreciate it. But this old man is not blowing hot air, I've told you that time and time again. I know something, and I don't get up here and just run my mouth to be running it. There's something to be said, and I don't mind saying it. I want to go to this issue about that girl that killed a baby up there at Mercyhurst. She killed that baby. Now, the judge wants to give her parole. Give her another chance. How about that girl that held her baby up to keep that dude from beating her? She didn't kill her baby. She got 10 years, I think. They put the wrong one in jail, they should have been putting the dude in jail. You don't beat women, what kind of man are you? If a sucker would hit my daughter, I'd probably be in jail now, because I come to see you, buddy. I will come to see you. I done raised her, and you gonna beat on her? If you can't get along with her, leave her. Leave her. I'll always take her back, because she'll always be my daughter. Something should be done about that. I'm not saying the girl should get out, shouldn't be able to get out on parole. I'm not the judge, and the judge ain't the judge if you want to know the truth. Because we're not given the power to judge, but he was put in that position. Now, when that girl held that baby up, she shouldn't have went to jail. Go to jail for what? She didn't kill her baby. That girl took a bag and put on that baby and smothered that baby. But God will take care of that. You know, y'all should get on your knees and ask God to give you something up there, because some of you don't have nothing up there. You think you know everything, and you don't know nothing. Ask God for guidance, and then ask the people, what do they want you to do? But you don't think the peoples have enough knowledge up there to have any ideas as to what they want you to do? Them hotels down there, non-taxable, you're building another one, non-taxable. That don't make no damn sense to me at all, and I don't see what sense it make to you. Here you finna raise taxes. Raise taxes for what? You're giving tax money away down there. You got two, here you putting up another one, tax-free. Pretty soon, poor peoples won't be able to stay in this town. Your taxes, look what you did to the garbage. You shouldn't have did that, you should have went out there and collected that money. And then, if you needed some more, what you always need some more money look like? No, let's go to the people's pocket. A lot of peoples don't have nothing in their pocket. A lot of peoples don't have nothing in their pocket. You're not, you're not a compassionate people, for one thing. You should look at yourself and look, try to find some compassion somewhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Ms. Ruby, we can now continue with the rest of the meeting?
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 15906, Official Ordinance Number 4, 2015, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $239,975 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the Expenditure thereof of Construction of Historic Little Italy Streetsave Improvement Project. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15906, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 4 of 2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 4, 2015, finally by a six nays zero. Council File Number 15907, Official Ordinance Number 5, 2015, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $93,826 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the Expenditure thereof for Construction of the Perry Square Kerb Bumpout Project. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Bill Number 15907, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 5 of 2015, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 5 of 2015, finally by a six nays zero. Council File Number 15908, Official File Ordinance Number 6, 2015, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $102,500 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue through Coastal Zone Management Grant, $45,000, PennDOT MPO Funding, $60,000, and Erie County Funding, $7,500, Providing for the Expenditure thereof for the City of Erie Comprehensive Plan Initiative Phase 2. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15908, and now known as Official File Ordinance 6 of 2015, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 6 of 2015, finally by a six nays zero. Okay, ordinances for first reading. Council File 15909, Appropriating the Sum of $523,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the Expenditure thereof for the Preliminary Engineering and Feasibility Study of McBride Viaduct East Avenue Bridge. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council Ordinance Number 159909, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance Number 15909, by a six nays zero, on first reading.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Mersky?
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any separations?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we separate Number 2 under New Business for comment?
Okay, Number 2. Any other separations? No separations, we, with that, is the only separation that we'll go forward then?
Number 2?
Yeah, Number 2 is the only one in New Business.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
We now want to have a discussion on the Number 2 in New Business?
May I read it first?
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
Okay. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mrs. Haran Kunso, resolve that the City Council of Erie, in accordance with the Municipal Authorities Act 53, PA, CSA, Section 5601 et cetera, hereby adopts the resolution enacted by the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority, EMTA, on January 26, 2015, which amends its Articles of Incorporation in order to extend the term of the Authority an additional 50 years from the date of approval of the amendment and further to amend the Articles to describe with greater particularity the purposes for which the Authority was incorporated, including, but not limited to, the operation of a paratransit system. A full copy of the EMTA's amendment is pended heretofore as Exhibit A. Discussion?
Do we have a discussion?
Mr. President, I just separated this item because we had a discussion in the caucus room before our meeting about the extension of this agreement, and the purpose being that their current agreement is expiring in order to enter into union contracts that are longer than a year or so, they need to have a longer agreement. We did discuss the makeup of the board and how there's a nine-member board for EMTA, six appointees of the mayors and three of the counties. And making this action today does not preclude us from having conversations with the different municipalities or the county in discussing the future of the Authority's board members or membership or association. So I just wanted to clarify that we still understand that it's a regional authority, and it does, EMTA does obviously serve most of Erie County, not just the city, and we ought to look at continuing to expand its regional nature. But we need to do this action just to keep the operations moving forward with contract negotiations and the existence of the municipal authority. So I have a council of governments meeting this afternoon that I will, meeting with members of different municipalities, governments, and hopefully at that time, we can discuss going forward with- going forward with looking into the future of the authority. Thank you.
Ms. Kunso, is there any other discussion on this Item Number Two of New Business? Any other discussion? Do we want, I wanna vote on Number Two for the New Business?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Roby. Do we want to start today with Mr. Kotowski? We'll start on this end.
I'll give you a break. I have an overall report. I had one committee meeting. That was with the O&amp;E Pension Plan, and all things are proceeding very well there. And I'll have more reports as I start to get into the new year in my committee assignments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kotowski. Mr. Winarsky, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very brief today. Our Erie Downtown Partnership is having two public meetings, one this morning, which is going on now, but the one that maybe the majority of us can make would be tonight at 6:30 right here in council chambers. The meeting is just to get public opinion as well as from the residents' business on implementing a downtown master plan to, just to seek any input on what would help make our downtown better. Like I said, it's gonna be 6:30 at night right here in council chambers. All are welcome. I also wanna thank our Downtown Partnership for the job they did on our sidewalks out here. Lot of snow, and a lot of them are right down to the bare cement, so thank you for that. Also attended the Port Authority meeting, and really not a lot to report, but out of our carmineuse shipyard here, we have shipped out 27 locomotives as well as six transformers this past year, so that's a pretty good number. They are exploring into the CRIS once again, putting some new things forward to help get us that CRIS money as well as any entities down there to help get that CRIS money. And the Erie Bank, I wanna thank them. They are going to be the new sponsor for the naming rights for our Eight Great Tuesdays. So, I wanna thank them for stepping to the plate. Other than that, did also attend the EMTA Board Meeting this past week, and really the biggest issue was extending this lease, and I'm glad we did. We can negotiate afterwards, but this helps keeping us move forward and getting these contractual arrangements in place so the actually $60 million project can move forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Ms. Kunso, would you like to go next for your report?
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. First off, I just wanna apologize for missing last meeting. I was on vacation with my family, so I appreciate the time to do that with my family. Now that we're back into the new year, the Council of Governments will be meeting today to do reorganization. Every year, because municipal officials change, sometimes there may be new delegates to the council governments, and we will meet with them today. We'll also continue to pursue regional initiatives and bring up the topic of the EMTA Board. I did notice quite a bit of activity regarding the idea of the historic preservation ordinance and that we've talked about, and we had some study sessions over time here about preventing demolition of historic homes in our historical registry. So, I think that that's certainly something we ought to continue to evaluate and pursue. We all are dismayed when we see historical homes being taken down in our beautiful city, and we wanna prevent that as much as possible. I just wanna thank Holy Family. I know that Councilman Murzky's gonna talk about that, but it was a nice surprise to receive a beautiful card from the students thanking us for our service, and we certainly thank their school and their administrators there for thinking of us and for making an impact on their students' lives. So, we appreciate that. One comment regarding property tax bills. I don't know, Jill, if you know, and I don't see the city treasurer here, but when the bills will be coming out for property tax?
I think they're being printed as we speak, so they should be going out by the end of this week.
Okay, very good.
Guessing.
I know some citizens are wondering when their bills are coming.
We've received some calls.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Mr. Murzky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I wanna commend the Streets Department on doing a great job with the snowfall that was out there. There was a lot of snow to move, and it fell at a time that wasn't convenient for commuters, but they really were out there in force. All plows were out and working overtime, and it's never, it's a thankless job in the fact that the minute you plow, it's still snowing, and then it piles up, and you just keep going and keep going. I wanna thank, you know, the Streets Department, but also, you know, those citizens that call. We try to get those done as soon as we can. I want them to realize we don't intentionally leave out streets. That was one of the comments that was made to me, is we purposely skip the street. We don't purposely do it. It's just during the rush hour, we get the main roads first. And so, if people can understand that the main roads get done during rush hour and during the day first, and we do center city during the day when it's even odd parking so that we can get the plows through, and then in the evening, we hit the outlying areas of the city. Right now, that's the plan in place, and that seems to be working for us. So, just be patient. We do get to all the roads. Couple other things that happened. I went to the Neighborhood Watch Council meeting. I wanna thank Chief Bowers and District Attorney Jack D'Neary for speaking at that meeting. It was very well-attended. Gun violence was brought up as one of the issues. It was interesting to note that the, all other crimes are down across the city of Erie. And one of the other things that was interesting to note is that gun violence is up across the state. It's not just an Erie thing, it's across the state. Police departments across Pennsylvania are dealing with this, and so it's one of those trends that are going on, not just locally, but across the state and country, and so we continue to work with that. And I thank Chief Bowers and the Erie Police Department for all their efforts with that. You know, you can tell from me, I like to eat, so I attended the Super Bowl with all the soup and the wing cook-off, and so this was good stuff. And the most important thing is it was for charity. And so, one of those things about Erie is that people give. And both were very well-attended, and one benefited, Sarah Reid, I believe, and the other one was the, now it escapes me, and I apologize for that. Crime Victims Center, correct. And then, or St. Martin Center, rather, I'm sorry. St. Martin Center was the wing cook-off. So, those organizations provide critical services to people in the community that government can't provide, and we thank them for what they do. Those looking for education, for career readiness, we just received this letter from the IU that they're opening Adult Education and Career Readiness Center at 1238 French Street. They'll offer GED exams, English as a second language, and academic skills for entry into the workforce and post-secondary training. And so, that's over at 1238 French Street. And finally, I just wanted to thank what Jessica said. Holy Family School gave us this for Catholic Schools Week. Thank you to the members of Erie City Council. Thank you for making Erie a great place. We appreciate all you do for the greatest city on earth. And they have a little note for each of us, and they gave us a little spiritual bouquet, so we need all the prayers we can get. So, that's always a good thing. We're gonna see if we can get this up on the city TV site, if you don't mind. So, thank you to Holy Family for doing that for us. That's all I have. That was a big one.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Erie Housing Authority meeting. The most important thing on their agenda was that they received their 2014 audit. There were no findings or no recommendations, and once again, they continue to run a top-notch organization. And kudos go out to Mr. John Haran and board and staff. I received a phone call from a citizen, very nice, but he didn't leave his name or number, so I couldn't get back to him, but he was concerned that West Seventh Street by the school, I'm thinking around Cascade, he said it wasn't plowed, it was tough getting there, and Councilman Murzky just explained that sometimes we miss a block, but it's not on purpose, and I'm pretty sure at this point in time that it's taken care of. And if it hasn't been, please give me another call and leave your name and number, and I'll get back to you. Kudos go out to the Police Department for the outstanding jobs that they do and the danger they put themselves in trying to protect the majority of us. And Chief Bowers does an outstanding job in leadership. I had the opportunity of working with him on many occasions. You know, again, Councilman Murzky indicated that the gun violence is up all over the country. There's no, there's no way that a police department anywhere can stop the violence because you don't know when it's gonna happen. They react to it, and they react within a short timeframe than they are doing their job. But don't call me and say, "You have to do something about the violence." We cannot stop it because you don't know when it's gonna happen. We just had three people get shot recently. If the police knew about it, they would've been there, they would've stopped it. We have to do something in our community. That's where it began. And when you talk about young kids, it starts at home with the parents. So, the police department is doing the best they can with what they got. And when people don't know, "I don't know who shot me, I don't know who shot me," you know, and you know I know. So, get off the police department. They're doing their job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Do we have a report?
I have no, I have no report today.
No report? Okay. I do have a few things I wanted to review and report on the City of Erie Comprehensive Plan. We've selected a consultant. I was involved on the advisory committee for that. The consultant's name is CZB, and that's an LLC. The advisory committee consisted of a representative of City Council, Department of Economic and Community Development, City Engineering, Code Enforcement, and County Planning. We reviewed the applications. There was three consultants who were chosen for interviews. CZB was chosen for their approach and their expertise. This is a planning firm that will provide expertise in developing comprehensive plan and facilitating the public input that's gonna be happening soon. The project scope of the work includes development of implementable comprehensive plan, which will be the first in the city of Erie. The purpose of the development of a comprehensive plan is to provide guidance for growth and development of the city for at least the next 10 years. The preliminary plan is due by September 2015, and the final plan adopted shortly thereafter. I also want to make a note about the discussion lately about the proposed demolition delay ordinance. As has been reported at the past meetings, I continue to work on the details of this proposal for demolition delay. We've already received comments and other information from our solicitor, and that's really the reason why we're kind of taking a second look and trying to see what the best fit for the city is and to try to go forward. I'm hoping to present to council with a proposal very soon after further research and consideration. I also wanna report about what was noted in the paper today about the delinquent refuse bills. There is news about the delinquencies. There's a record number of payment plans that have been going on, and hopefully there's gonna be more that'll be established and more accounts that'll hopefully just be paid. If anyone has any questions, please call Erie Water Works. We'll continue to work on this issue as, to get more accounts paid and hopefully get a really good handle on this as opposed to, you know, making it look like it was before, really. Last item I had is I wanted to, as I've been mentioning before, we've kind of established council priorities for 2015. There are four items now, and again, it's kind of a working list, but it's kind of just establishing priorities for this year. And what I wanna do next is kind of work on establishing action items of what council can do to support, advocate, or kind of question issues that are gonna help our city. So, we're gonna continue to move forward and actually take actions on these items. We're not just gonna put out priorities and say, "Okay, that's what we think is what we should concentrate on." Now, what could we actually do as a city council to make things move forward? And that's my report. Ms. Roby?
Okay. City Council adjourns at 9:53. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.